... two to five of the United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
The so-called meeting after Thursday's time, the example was notified at the meeting, and it was also posted with the sort of... Jim, do you take office?
Chairman Grebner?
Here.
Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
Mr. Catano?
Here.
Mr. Garofalo?
Here.
Mr. De Sizeri?
Here.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here. Okay, the absence of the Russell wheel is... Okay, the minutes of the July meeting, because there was no August meeting. Is there no...
I make the motion.
Motion by Dan Sutcliffe.
Aye.
Senator Anthony Di Tonno, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? First on our agenda tonight is ZB 22-11, the name of Charles and Nancy Green.
Good evening, Mr. ... Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dan Parenti. I'm an attorney with Hoffman de Museo on behalf of Charles and Nancy Green. Unfortunately, the Greens are not here tonight. However, I do have here Mr. Imperial, who's with the Solar Panel Company. And we're here tonight seeking a variance to put in a ground-based solar panel array at the Greens' home at 1914 Harding Highway, which is a highway property. If the board has any questions regarding the solar panels themselves, Mr. Imperial can respond to those, but I can represent that unfortunately they've been installed already, and they're there. So we come here with our hat in our hands a little bit, saying that was a series of miscommunications, but unfortunately they're there already. But I can say that they are attractive and certainly not anything that anybody notices driving down the highway, because I drive by every twice a day on my way to and from work, and I didn't even, I never noticed them until someone pointed them out to me. So with that being said, I submit that this variance would not have any impact on the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and would not substantially have any detriment to the public good. I submit that the green-based energy would promote the general welfare and therefore general reasons, or general, special reasons exist, excuse me. So with that, I'll submit to the board and answer any questions you might have, my, myself, or Mr. Imperial.
Was it, you put the solar panels, then, was it inspected and everything by the township?
Uh, I... Mr. Imperial?
No, no, it wasn't. So what happened was there was another company...
Sure. One more. You just want to... Sure.
You swear to God you thought Ketchum was going to get...
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Vince Imperial, 31000 Road, Swedesboro, New Jersey. So there was another company that was originally hired to do the work. Well, they handled the permitting part of it, hired us to do the installation, but obviously they didn't follow through on the permitting, so we didn't know until after we had installed the system. They went out of business, Greens asked us to close it out, and then we found out that this mess ensued.
Okay.
It can, I mean, it's fully, like, it's all interconnected, so if you, it's actually on right now. We shut it off because its utility hasn't approved it yet, right? But once it gets passed here, if it passes here, then we can have the utility turn it on. But yeah, electrically, it works, it's functional. It was just kind of an oversight by the company that originally did the permitting, so...
So what would happen now? You'd have to have our electrical inspector or somebody inspect it, right?
Yeah, correct. So yeah, two parts, you'd have your building and your electrical. They'd go out, check the foundation, check the footings, and then they would check the electrical. And then once that passes, we send it over to the township or to the utility, and they'd issue PTO.
So there were no permits?
No, no.
Without permits?
Well, yeah, correct, correct, yeah. Again, had we known, we would have just handled the permitting side, but we should know.
There's a few questions in the engineer letter, I guess, that they all move up to their engineer. There were a few questions that I think we need to ask. Well, the ordinance has changed, correct? We might have made a little mistake.
Yes.
Right? Oh, it's now three acres and 50 feet of setback, correct? And height restriction is wrong.
Yes, that's correct. And just to be fair to the applicant, when they had another company apply, and that zoning permit was approved, and then when the second company applied, that was wrongly found that there really wasn't enough language in the ordinance to say that it was a permitted use, and then it was denied. So I think that that's where the miscommunication had came from. But you would have to submit all the building permits retroactively, as well as if he can't show the building subcode, you know, the work that was done, they'll have to have an engineer certify the work.
Which we've gotten, actually. We have the engineer already certified the letter, so we can have that sent over. If they need us to dig up the footings, you know, we can of course do that.
How many acres are on this property?
Thirteen, I believe. Now, of the thirteen, I think only like two or three are usable. I think the back area is like wetlands, so obviously we're not back there, so...
Yeah, do it.
Excuse me.
That'd be pretty close to the road, but well, that's, I mean, it's...
They're not, yeah, they're definitely not 50 feet, they're further back than 50 feet. I mean, we measured with a wheel from setbacks from the side and to the street, so we made sure we were within our setbacks. I think the issue, though, honestly, was the permitting, which, again, it's kind of a moot point now, but...
So yeah, you what, 55, 56, 55?
I think it's 55, 50, I believe, right? I think we, I can measure it again, I think it was 75 to 100 feet from the street, and I think we were, oh God, I don't know, maybe 100 or 200 feet from the neighboring property, which we had a hard time trying to figure that out, where the neighboring property was.
I wish there was 15 feet to the one property line.
Uh, 15?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it's 15. I think we had an issue with that, just trying to figure out where the actual property line was, because it was kind of like a weird property.
I think there's a confusion over the property line versus the side, versus the street. And he was measuring from the street, and so when he measured 50 feet, it was from the street, which may be, which we think is different than the property line.
All right, just to jump in, the drawing provided by the applicant says 15 feet from, assuming this is the property unless it was provided by C Point Solar.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that's accurate, though. Again, I can measure it, we can re-measure it again. I just don't think the setback from the neighboring property is accurate. I think it's a lot further than 15 feet.
Oh.
I think so.
Neighboring property, you got 165. I'm not sure that's really a legitimate question.
Oh, okay, okay.
Feet to the property line at the front, from the street.
Yeah, okay.
Not the curb, but...
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, I think we had, again, I think that might be a miscalculation as well. I think it was, it was well past 50 feet. Again, I can measure it for you, but I just don't think that's accurate.
I think based off of the plan that was originally submitted and what's actually being chucked out there are two completely different things. I believe when we scaled it off Google, it's about a 42-foot setback from the highway itself. And I'll jump in real quick and make my couple comments. So one of our general comments was there's no details of the actual array provided, that there would actually need to be information on the panel itself, with the height, you know, the actual footing that would be utilized, and then order from the building department to actually inspect it.
Sure.
And then one of our concerns, I know it's not noted in the environmental commission's letter, but the panels are directly adjacent to an existing stream, and it's unclear if any wetlands were actually impacted during the construction.
Sure.
This is something that the applicant should verify, and it's our recommendation that they actually need to. You know, it's, doesn't look, I can't really tell, because they don't have a before and after picture of what's actually...
Can I ask you, the package you have, you don't have the structural letter, correct?
You don't have that.
Yeah, because I think what it was, was like kind of the zoning part of it, so I don't think you guys had the full plan set, nor do you have the actual structural letter from the engineer, and that would give the footings on it.
Yeah, there's...
I can get that over to you.
From my understanding, what was provided for the township was part of the application, that was not permitted.
Gotcha, good.
We're going to assume that was done correctly. If it's not, we're going to have to fix it.
Of course, and willing to do that, of course.
Any other comments? I make the motion. We open the call.
Hold on, Chris has some comments.
Just a few things to point out here. So, as has been said, there is a new ordinance that was adopted last month, however, this application was submitted back in, I guess, March or April, so technically they're not subject to the new solar requirements. At the time that the application was submitted, it simply does not permit you suddenly accessory use in the district. And under those guises, really, it's up to you as the board, you can determine what you feel is appropriate bulk setbacks or buffering requirements or such use. That being said, under the new requirements, minimum three acres, they have, what we measured is 18 acres on the properties, properties definitely large enough. 50-foot setbacks will be required as well as land state buffering is really the important thing that are the new ordinance, which you can certainly use as a guide in making the determination of what would be appropriate on this property.
The house is a...
The house is only about five feet.
The house is, yeah. I was going to, I was going to point that out, the house is only five feet.
The house is very close to the frontage, which, that's an existing non-controlling condition, they're not proposing to touch that anyway. Yeah, I think that's what we measured, it's about 42 feet, give or take, from the property line, so not quite 50. And then there's also, there's no landscaping in front of it right now, plenty of existing trees behind it and beside it to the buffering adjacent residences in the northwest. There's nothing along the road frontage right now.
The whole point is for it to get sunk.
Yes, very true. So that's something you can take into consideration. With some landscaping to be appropriate there, maybe some lower shrubs. Other than that, this is a D1U series, so they definitely prove the positive and negative criteria, to show there's a special reason for it to be there and that there's really going to be minimal, no impact on the adjacent properties.
Anybody who doesn't vote like you're already going to... I just want to clarify, gentlemen, there's a few items that were raised, details of what was constructed, needed to be provided, but you said okay for that.
Yeah.
So would that be okay to be a condition of the... And there was a question raised regarding landscape, whether any landscaping was required, and of whether there was a wetland's impact.
It's part of the process.
Is it just the details of the construction?
Yeah.
Use variance?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. De Sizeri?
Yeah, next time, make sure.
Well, there.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Garofalo?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
Mr. De Sizeri?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Yes. Everything in order?
Yes.
So I'm here for something similar to use variance, I guess, for the solar panels. What I was told, everything was sent to whoever it was supposed to be sent to, and it's a matter of approving. Are yours already installed? No, 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 no. Yeah, I thought they would have been by now, but no. So whatever, I guess it was the same type of thing, the solar company thought it was going to be, you know, one, two, three, right down the line, and then they found out there was a new variance. So I mean, I only have the two acres, but it's 300 feet back, you know, with landscaping on one side and 75 to 100 feet of woods behind it. So I guess that's where the problem came. And they said the same thing, they sent the application in before the new rules. Yeah. They, I'm pretty sure, because I ended up calling the mayor, because I didn't know who was telling me the right information. So that's what he told me, that the rules changed, so you had to go by the new rules, but the solar companies were saying they were going to go by the old rules and whatever.
It's clear that the rules did change twice within the span of about three or four months, so it was a confusing gap with all, let's not say gap, a confusing time period from the beginning of this year until about a month ago in terms of what was actually required for solar. This was submitted in July '26, I see, which was, I think, about two weeks before the newest solar ordinance was adopted. And at the time, I think maybe back in, whether it was in March, maybe, that the town adopted the solar ordinance, permit them as accessory uses to residences, but the placement of where that was in the ordinance was in the pineland section only, so it could have been interpreted that it only applied to properties within the pinelands, and this is not of the pinelands. So a generous view of the ordinance that was in place at the time, at least to me, the intent of the ordinance was to permit accessory solar uses, ground-mounted and roof-mounted solar, on all residential properties. That's what it says in the ordinance, so just in the section only under the pinelands. So under those standards, it would be a conditional use, that it don't quite meet all of the conditions required. So those conditions were 50-foot setbacks and landscaping.
You don't, you don't meet any of the setbacks?
They're...
Well, I meet the setbacks.
They'll be side yards, but they are, they are in the rear yard, they're just 20 feet from the side yard, and, excuse me, there's no other condition. I believe they meet the minimum block size. They're not 50 feet from the side property line. I don't know if we have, we know the height on this, they're not supposed to exceed eight feet.
But it did not meet the minimum block requirement?
Oh, that's right, yeah, they're two-acre lot, rather than three-acre lots, they don't meet the three-acre minimum. 50 feet required, 20 feet provided, side property line, and, okay, they did provide some sort of the, it looks like the ground array is going to be about 10 feet high where eight feet is the mass permitted.
So they're putting solar panels on the roof, which is not any type of problem, right?
Well, the new ordinance, I think, permits solar panel on a roof, there's a maximum height from the shingles of the roof. But generally speaking, on a roof, as long as it's facing south or even east or west, they're totally permitted. So the setback requirements are for ground arrays, and the landscaping requirements are for ground arrays.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, they, I had a couple minor comments. One, the size of the actual system, throughout the application, there's three different sizes of kilowatts that were actually noted. What's the actual size?
It's 13.44, I guess, yeah.
All right. We asked that there, you know, be, you know, clarity provided, whether there's going to be any proposed grading or clearing associated with the work.
Right.
The exact location of proposed array. So based off of the sketch that was provided, it appears it's in one location, or the old survey, I should say, and then there's a sketch that was provided showing it, you know, in a similar location, but it doesn't appear to be the exact same. So the actual final location of it, of where that actually, you know, lies in terms of the setbacks that you're requesting.
I mean, I don't have the drawing with me, but whatever they sent.
But as I say, it differs, depending on...
About how much does that...
I don't know, there's nothing...
I don't have a feeling.
So that kind of leads into my next comment, is that the existing conditions and what are provided on the survey are inconsistent. I'm assuming the house is recently built within the past...
Eight years.
Okay. So that kind of leads into, you know, something that should be provided to actually show the exact locations of what it is. And then just to confirm that you, all the existing utilities are located, they don't hit a gap.
Right, yeah.
On that, I don't have any comments.
Any comments from board not old enough to talk? I make the motion, we open the call. Second, Michael Paul, in favor, aye, opposed, anybody here in the public, if you're already going against that? I make the motion, opposed. Second, Michael Paul, in favor, aye, opposed, public portion's close. Another solar. I make the motion, opposed. I'd rather keep solar panels on the ground than on the roof. I'll second that motion. Motion by Dan Sutcliffe, second by Michael Paul, then vocal.
Before that, John, again, sorry, but when these things appear in the letter, I have to know where they, where we fall on the end. So there's going to be, first of all, there's a variance for side yard, acres and height, there's a 20-foot side yard where 50 is required, two acres where three is required, 10 feet of height where eight is permitted. I'm assuming that's part of the motion. But our engineer indicated that you need to have a plan to show where it actually is located, because right now we can't tell where it is. So is that one of the conditions of...
Yeah.
No, just some recommendation that they locate all these utilities.
And it's in a clear area, it's going to be a clear area. Yeah, it's already cleared, yeah.
Yeah, he made the note.
Then they sent, do you have a recent thing that they sent us?
So there was one where it said 13.44, your actual application, it looks like that they're, I guess, or something submitted to the state.
Whatever, yeah.
It's 12.96, and then there was another location, which I think is a typo, I think it said 13.44.
Gotcha.
But you can, when you provide the updated location, then you can just follow.
Right. It's just for your house, this is for power, too. Yeah.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. De Sizeri?
Yeah.
Chairman Grebner?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Garofalo?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes. Thank you. So I just need a diagram to, right, submit it?
I'll reach out to the side. Yeah, it's a lot. You're welcome.
Okay, that's on our agenda, Nicholas and Lisa Mettings.
Hi.
I do. Name and address?
Lisa Mettings, 2177 Williamstown Road, Franklinville.
Just tell the board what you're here for.
Yeah, I'm here to apply for a variance for a new construct of a 30-by-60 pole barn.
Not built.
Building.
Not built.
No, it's, no, no, not, no, not, no, not built.
Usually that's the way it works here. It seems like you built it and then...
No.
Okay, 30 by 60.
It's a variance, it's a variance exceeding the maximum private garage space.
12 one.
And there's a, like a lean-to also.
Yeah, 12-foot lean-to on the side.
Yeah, you could put this on your other lot, though.
Yeah, there's a deed to combine the two lots, it's just with the county, so we're combining those two lots.
Residential use only?
Residential use only.
What's the height of the structure? What is it?
12 foot.
Yeah. Again, that's the inside?
Oh, that's the inside, I'm sorry.
Oh, we have 15.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
15.
15, at the peak. I don't think it says on it.
Water, plumbing?
Electric, down the road, probably no plumbing.
And what's the work, yeah, what's...
Storage, boats, my car, toys.
And any comments, Chris?
Sure, this one, not a use variance, this is one of those two criteria within the code. One is within the definition of a private garage, they're limited to 1,200 square feet, and size, this is 1,800 square feet, if you don't include the lean-to portion. So they need a variance to exceed the size, and there's also, I forget if it's in the general district standards or the general zoning standards, that garages and accessory structures are supposed to be in the side or rear yard, and they're proposing this in the front yard. And also, there's provision that says private garage, that's supposed to be limited to the size of three vehicles. Doesn't necessarily specify which vehicles, I guess three boats would be a bit bigger than three cars, but basically the only variance required here is the pole barn is going to be a little bit bigger than is otherwise permitted. And the only question I did have initially really was, it wasn't listed in the application, but the drawing shows lot line to be removed, so you are officially consolidating these properties?
Yeah, so the deed's already in with the...
The deed already been submitted to the county?
Yeah, we're just waiting for it to be returned, but I think I submitted a copy of that with my application.
So it doesn't look like, with the lot line going away, it doesn't look like there's any issues with setbacks, other than this being in the front yard, there's no, they're not approaching on an adjacent property like it looked like on the drawing provided. Yeah, it's a one variance, and it's a bulk variance, so the positive, negative criteria are a bit less there, it's just that they have to, so either there's a hardship, or what they're proposing would be a preferable zoning alternative over performance of the code.
Does it look like anybody's here in the public?
It's true.
Yeah, so I, to follow up on some of Chris's comments in our letter, so is the lean-to going to be enclosed, or is it going to be open?
Open.
Okay. And then the actual work that's proposed to take place, it was just a little unclear, is there going to be a driveway expansion for this?
Maybe down the road, but not at the moment, no.
So how is, how are you guys going to connect the existing driveway to the, to the pole barn? Are you going to pave up that portion, is there a concrete acre or something like that?
Can I, can I perjure? The building, the doors are going to be here.
It's going to be flush.
Yeah, so this is the, basically the side of the building, and this will be the front of the building, because this is the existing driveway.
And that driveway already stops right at the front of it.
Correct, yeah.
All right, so then, a couple other comments that we had, besides the lot consolidation plan that was provided, there's no other details of the structure itself, so, you know, it's our recommendation that the type of foundation that's going to be used is provided. You already answered that there's no driveway that's going to be proposed, and you already answered that only electric's going to be installed down the road. It's also recommended that a grading and injury plan is submitted, just to confirm that there's not going to be any adverse drainage impacts. I know a comment from the environmental commission was to reduce the amount of tree clearing that's going to take place as part of this construction, so it's our recommendation that a plan be provided to confirm these concerns here at the press.
Okay, anyone from the public? Second that. Motion by Dana, second by Anthony Di Tonno, all in favor, aye, opposed, anyone here from the public, like, you heard? I make the motion, opposed. Second. I got stuff in the letter, I got to clarify, so there's a couple recommendations.
I knew not to get off.
Grading and drainage plan, is that a yes or a no?
What's this?
The grading and drainage plan recommended by engineer.
It's all in there for a permit.
I'm sorry.
It should be all done with a permit.
Just want to clarify whether it's required.
I don't think they need a creative, but...
Thank you.
So that was not required, and just they, they had also asked for, I guess, like an architectural, or some sort of...
I would say some, some details of what's actually going to be constructed, so type of foundation.
Yeah, don't I submit that with my construction plans? Okay, I have, I do have that from the builder already. Okay, yes.
Could you just submit that?
Sure.
As soon as possible. I think those are the only items. Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. De Sizeri?
Yeah.
Chairman Grebner?
Yes.
Mr. Catano?
Yes.
Mr. Garofalo?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
I just have one last question.
Since approved, am I allowed to be willing to start immediately, knowing that it's at